Craig, I show the seven o'clock. I think you have a board or do you not?
Are we good to go?
Looks like you're all day.
Yes, I believe you are, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then, let's go. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is Christopher Carley, Chair of the Concord Zoning Board of Adjustment. Welcome to the September meeting of the Board. Due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis, we will be conducting our meeting electronically rather than in person, as authorized by Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04. The Governor's Emergency Order waives the usual legal requirement for a physical location at which the public can observe and listen contemporaneously to ZBA meetings. However, in accordance with the emergency order, the city is taking the following steps to provide for public participation in and access to the proceedings as fully as possible. We are required to provide public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are using the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Zoom platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number. Number 1-929-205-6099. That's 1-929-205-6099. And the password is webinar ID number 610-919-318. That's 610-919-318. Or you can tune in by clicking on the following website address. It's US02WEB.ZOOM.us/j/610919318. I'll read that again, because you're jotting it down. It's US02WEB.ZOOM.us/j/610919318. We are also required to provide public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. The city has given notice to the public of how to access the meeting using Zoom, and you can find detailed instructions on how to participate on the City of Concord's website at wwwconcordnewhampshire.gov/280/zoning-board-of-adjustment. That's ConcordNH.gov/280/zoning-board-of-adjustment. We are also required to provide a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 603-856-3913, or email at code, C O D E, at ConcordNewHampshire.gov. Adjourn the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event that any member of the public is unable to access the meeting concerning a case or cases in which they have interest, please call the same number I mentioned earlier, 603-856-3913, or email code@ConcordNH.gov as soon as possible. We will adjourn the hearing and reschedule it for a time that will allow all to participate. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by a roll call vote. Let's start the making, meeting by taking a roll call of attendance. When each member states their presence, would they also please state whether there is anyone in the room with them during the meeting, which is a requirement of the right to know law, starting with Ms. Scott?
I am by myself.
And that's Laura Scott. Andrew?
Andrew Winters, I'm alone.
And Nick?
Nick Wallner, and I am alone.
And I'm Chris Carley, and I am also alone. Our first order of business this evening is going to be a little out of the ordinary. I will first walk you through the procedure that we will go through the cases we're going to hear tonight. It's our usual procedure. We will ask the appellant to testify in the order in which we call out the cases, and that's generally in the order of the agenda, not always, but usually. And we will ask them to be, I will swear them in, ask them to identify themselves and give us any information concerning their case that they would like us to have. We do request that they can find their testimony, if at all possible, through a 10-minute interval. Following that, I will call for testimony from anyone who is in favor of the appeal, and also from anyone who is in opposition of the, to the appeal. And we will, I will, anyone who wishes to testify, we will also swear in prior to hearing their testimony. We request that those who wish to offer comment and find their testimony, if at all possible, through a five-minute interval. I remind anyone who is testifying here who hasn't done so before that the Board is only able to consider criteria for a variance and/or a special exception and/or an equitable waiver, all three of which type cases we will be hearing this evening. Those, the specific criteria are the only thing that we can discuss. Anything else isn't helpful to us or to your point of view. The criteria themselves are listed in the ordinance. The first order of business then this evening is to acknowledge that we do not have a full board this evening. We have four members present. There are two cases in which we, one of our board members will need to recuse himself, which means there will be only three members present. If you wish, you have the right to have your case heard by a five-member board. If you choose which we will, and we, if that is the case, we will recess your, your case until next month, or actually next week, I believe it is. Do I have that correct, Craig?
Yes, anything recessed, if otherwise requested, will be heard next week, September 9th at 7:00 PM.
Okay. Unless you request otherwise, you could go out, you could go out to next month. If you agree to have your case heard by a less than a five-member board, the fact that it was heard by less than a five-member board will not be grounds for requesting a rehearing, as is the case with a five-member board. A four- or three-member board still requires a three-member vote for any motion to pass. So what I'm going to do first is I'm going to read through the cases and ask if there is anyone here representing that appellant, and if they would like to have their case heard this evening, or deferred to next week, or deferred to some other time. The first case is Case 3420, Michael Chapman. This is a recessed case. There were two items on, from last month, there were two items on the agenda that we recessed. Is there anyone here for Michael Chapman?
Yes, hi, Michael Chapman speaking.
Mr. Chapman, would you like to have your case recessed again, or would you like to have it heard this evening?
No, I think we went over it pretty good last time, and I'll, I think we just, a brief going over it again tonight would be fine.
Okay, so you'll be heard by a four-member board?
Okay.
Okay. The next case is Rosemary Hinton, 3720. This is also a recessed case. Ms. Hinton, are you here? Is there anyone here to represent Ms. Hinton?
Hello?
Hello, Ms. Hinton?
Yes.
Would you like your case to be heard this evening, next week, or at some other?
Next week, but I do have a question. Why is Andrew Winters recusing himself?
He's not obliged to tell you that. Actually, all he has to tell you is that he's, feels, that he has a conflict of interest.
I, I don't know if it'd be appropriate. I, I'm, I could explain, but I don't think it'd be appropriate to do it in, you know, right now, but I'd be happy to, to explain it.
Do you want to, do you have my number? I have a feeling, because I see other names too. But can you call me?
I honestly don't know. I, if, I don't know if that's permitted for me to call her to let her know about the conflict or not, if I, if the.
I think it's entirely up to you, Andrew.
Yeah, I'll let you know.
All right, would you, does he, does Andrew have access to my telephone number?
Why don't you give it to me? I'll write it down.
It's, it's on the application.
I'll call you.
All right, sounds good.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, so Ms. Hinton's case is going to be heard next week.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next case, 4820, Mountain Lake Heating Fuel. Is there someone here from Mountain Lake Heating Fuel?
Yes, George.
Would you like to be heard tonight, next week, or some other time?
Tonight's fine.
Okay. That's Case 4820. You will be heard also by a four-member board. The next case is 4020, Melissa Chaput and Wendy Sullivan. Is there anyone here? I believe I see Ms. Chaput's name.
Yes, we are both here. Wendy and I are in the same room.
All right, would you like to be heard, when would you like to be heard?
I would like to be heard tonight, please.
Tonight, okay. Again, that would be a four-member board, I believe, yes. 4120, Fred Potter. Is there anyone here from Mr. Potter's office?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Board. This is Fred Potter. I would like to be heard next week, when Josh Messenger is expected to join me from Advantage Science.
Very good. You'll be heard next week by a full board. That brings us to Case 4020, 4220, excuse me, Rebecca Bacotti. Ms. Bacotti, when would you like your case to be heard?
I'm Rebecca Bacotti, and I would like to be heard tonight, if that's all right.
It's quite all right. You will be, let's see, the address on your case is 7 Harrison. You will be heard by a four-member board.
Thank you.
You're welcome. 4320, David Clayton, for Miranda and Andrew Hardister. Mr. Clayton, when would you like to be heard?
I'd like to defer it to next week.
All right. And then your address is?
16 Ty.
Oh, 16 Ty. Okay, so you'll be heard by a four-member board. 4520, Warren and Lucille Runde. Is anyone here for the Rundes?
I had communications from their representative earlier today that they wish to be deferred till next week. They may join us, so.
All right, we'll, we'll recess that case, and if for some reason that's not correct, we can always back up.
This is Kelly Ovibuck. Can you hear me?
Oh, there she is.
Yep, sorry. Yes, I'm, I'm with the firm of Solonian Hollis. I represent the Rundes, and we would like to defer it to next week.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Case 4620, Howard Rover. Mr. Rover? He's, Mr. Rover, I believe you are muted. You mean to be muted? I tell you what, we'll come right back to that one. Case 4720, Barbara Mariano. Is someone here representing Ms. Mariano? I think I heard that someone is.
Yeah.
I think Mr. Rover just came in. He just unmuted.
Yeah, I guess it, it muted me, I suppose.
All right, Mr. Rover.
Next week would be fine.
Next week is fine with you too. All right. Ms. Mariano, I, was it Mr. Emzie that is here for Ms. Mariano?
Yeah, well, actually, both Attorney Amy Manzelli and I are kind of co-handling this application, and we, I guess we, I say we have a split request for you folks tonight. It was just raised the other day that this might be a development of regional impact, and so we'd like to act, ask the Board to act on whether or not it treats this as being a development of regional impact. And then we would also like the hearing to be tabled until your October meeting, especially if you folks determine it's regional impact, we need time to give notice to the other parties.
All right.
Amy, did I get that correct?
Thanks, Peter. Yes, I'm here representing the owner, Barbara Mariano LLC, and Peter got it exactly right. Thank you.
All right, then, that's how we'll handle it. The last case then on our agenda this evening is 4920, Pamela Sullivan for Richmond Sullivan. Ms. Sullivan, what would you like to do? Which, when would you like the case heard?
Terry Trier, I am representing her tonight, and we would like to be heard tonight.
All right.
Terry, could you please spell your last name?
T R I E R.
Thank you.
So what I'm going to do with the Board's indulgence is I'm going to ask for a blanket motion for 3720, Rosemary Hinton, 4120, Fred Potter, 4320, David Clayton, 4520, Warren and Lucille Runde, 4620, Howard Rover, and that's all. Do I hear a motion to open and recess those cases?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
I will second it.
And this is recessed until the meeting next week, a week from today?
Yes.
Which is the ninth, I believe? Yes. Any discussion? All in favor?
Let's do a roll call.
Oh, I, so now what we'll do is move back to the cases that we are going to be hearing this evening, and move through them, through them in the usual fashion. The first case on the agenda is Case 3420, Michael Chapman.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, would you be able to do the one determining development of regional impact?
I see no reason why not.
Okay, that should be very quick and allow those folks to go home.
All right, that case is Case 4720, Barbara Mar, valid number plates attached to be stored outside in an area other than a motor vehicle sales area or recycling center. A variance from Article 28537, outside storage of materials and inventory, Section B, screening requirements, to waive the screening requirements along the northerly rear property line and the westerly side property lines. Variance to Article 28537, outside storage of materials and inventory, Section B, maximum area of lot to be used or designated for outside storage, permit outdoor storage of inventory on the Mariano lease parcel and the portion of the DMO Kia lease parcel dedicated to outdoor storage to waive the requirement that outside storage be a ratio of building area. And finally, variance from Article 2836, aquifer protection district, Section C3, prohibited uses, item M, to allow the development and operation of an automotive repair servicing and with or without auto body repair facility, which would be a principal use.
Sure, yeah. Amy Manzelli here from VCM Law, representing Barbara Mariano, the owner,
and. Do you want to tell the truth?
Yes, and this is Peter Emzie, Solonian Hollis, representing DMO Kia, and yes, I will also tell the truth.
All right. Before you start, I'm going to ask Craig, because the, the issue of that we're going to address this evening, of determination of regional impact, was not on the agenda, initial agenda. I'm going to ask that he explain briefly to all of us exactly what that means. When he gets back from getting a snack.
There we go. I'm picking up the wrong thing. Stop share. Okay, well, development of regional impact means any proposal before a local land use board, which in the determination of such land use board, could reasonably be expected to impact on a neighboring municipality because of factors such as, but not limited to the following, and they list several size and number of dwelling units that may be constructed, the proximity to the borders of a neighboring community, transportation networks, anticipated emissions such as light noise. But the one I think that seals it here is number five, it relates to the proximity to aquifers or surface waters which transcend municipal boundaries. And in this case, I will share the screen, number 10, Integra Drive, the subject property is here in the middle of the screen. I will turn on the community water supply system. That hatched area is the aquifer perimeter for the Pembroke Water System. So in my eyes, it's fairly clear that there is a possible impact or on the aquifer that transcends municipal boundaries.
Thank you very much. Would either Mr. Emzie or Ms. Manzelli like to offer any observations at this point?
Well, I, I can, I can go first, you know, I think this is the first time I've bumped into a determination or consideration of the issue of regional impact based on aquifer as opposed to traffic or something like that. But just because it's the first time, it doesn't mean there's nothing to it. I mean, there's no question, we're in the Concord Aquifer District. There's no question, we're near to the river, and, you know, ultimately, this is a Board's choice to make as to whether you feel that there is a potential impact on the aquifer as it relates to Pembroke, just across the Suncook River. Obviously, it would facilitate our process if this were not to be deemed a development of regional impact and does not impact Pembroke. However, you know, we acknowledge that the facts are what they are.
Ms. Manzelli, did you have anything to add in, or are we good?
Thank you. I think we're good. We'll leave it to the Board's wise discretion on this one.
Okay, thank you. Members of the Board, we've heard testimony from Craig that the aquifer does spread over into Pembroke, and that this property is in the aquifer, and that the law indicates that when that's the case, we have a, exact word is, determination or a development of regional impact. It looks that way to me. What do you think, Laura?
I actually, I have two questions. Craig, what, what's on this property now? Is this a vacant piece of property?
Yes, it is. It's totally undeveloped.
All right, and it's the, it's not that it's the aquifer, it's the watershed for the Pembroke Water Works, right?
No, this is actually an aquifer.
Okay, so it's just the aquifer, it's not, because I knew that, I know that Pembroke has some different areas for their, their water distribution system, so.
Yeah, it, it may be within the watershed, I don't know that, but this is a specific aquifer. There's several, especially along that Suncook River corridor there.
Well, my thoughts are that a development of regional impact, just give, all it does is give notice to the abutting community and to the Regional Planning Commission. They get copies of the plans, it gives them the opportunity to weigh in and provide input to this board. So on the abundance of caution, especially because the property is vacant currently, it's not a developed piece that's being redeveloped. It would be a good idea to deem it as a development of regional impact, so that the abutting community and the Regional Planning Commission can weigh in for us for our next meeting.
Andrew?
I'm inclined to agree. The thing that I think is odd about this statute is, this applicant, which I appreciate, they're not objecting to this, they're leaving up to us, but all things being equal, they would just sue not have the abutter notified, because that just adds another person who might contest their application, and there's no, the issue is who gets noticed, so there, there's no one to really advocate for the motion. I think Craig's bringing it to our attention wisely, but it would seem in many instances it might just be on us to note, to notice this if the applicant doesn't know, bring it to our attention and no one else does. So I, I'm inclined to support it, but I could definitely see something like this fall through the cracks, you know, if it's, if it's just sort of up to us to, on our own, figure it out. So I appreciate, you know, Craig bringing it to our attention.
Nick?
Yeah, I think with this particular request, I think I'm going to, I support what Laura said and what Andrew has said. I concur with him.
Very good. I, I think I agree with what my fellow Board members have said. Also, in the interest of consistency, we, I believe, Craig, correct me if I'm wrong, had a case at the Chevrolet dealership, Bank of Chevrolet?
Yes, you're, you're, you're correct, several, a couple, three years ago, when they were doing their remodel.
Where we also had to deal with this issue, and the Board ruled at that time that it was a, a matter of regional impact, I believe.
Correct.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we deem this a development of regional impact.
Is there a second?
I second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
You have to do the roll call.
Go the roll call. I'll never get used to that, as long as, the whole thing will be over by the time I start doing it. Ms. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Winters?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. I'm Chris Carley. So with that, I invite a motion to recess the balance of the case to the regular October 2020 meeting of the ZBA.
I have a question. Oh, wait, I have a, oh, well, I have a question for Craig. In the statute, don't, isn't there a requirement that there's a 30-day opportunity for the
Laura?
Planning Commission?
Jump in for a second. We've got a motion on the floor. Let's see if it gets seconded. We'll have a chance to talk about it. Is there a second?
Who made the motion?
The motion was Nick. Anybody there?
Sorry, what, I, I lost track. Is, is the motion to recess this to the October, the, the remainder of the variance in the October meeting?
Yeah.
Was it seconded, or am I seconded? I second.
All right. So we have a motion and a second, and now it's time for discussion. Laura?
Yeah, I was trying to beat Nick. He made the motion too quick. Craig, in the statute, isn't there a time requirement? We have to. Craig, in the statute, isn't there a time requirement we have to give to the abutting community and the Regional Planning Commission?
Yeah, again, I'm not overly familiar with this section, but I read it that you have to, at least fourteen days prior to the public hearing, the other local land use board shall notify the affected municipalities and Regional Planning Commission.
Right, I couldn't remember if it was a thirty day, a fifteen day, just making sure that we weren't recessing it and not giving the full time. Well, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, there's some issues here with building inspector determination and that, some, maybe up to thirty days, but yeah, we'll review the RSA completely.
Well, when's the October hearing? We'll probably be within thirty days regardless.
Yeah, well, the October hearing is going to be on October seventh.
Two guys, five days.
Yeah, this is Peter Emzie, not to confuse things and not to speak when I'm not invited, but the other thirty day requirement kind of keys into issuances of building permits and whatnot. We have to still go through site plan review before the planning board for a couple months, so there will be more than thirty days before we'll be at a point where we're asking for a building permit.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem.
Very good. We've had a discussion and a second, any further discussion? I'll call the, call the motion then. All those in favor, starting with Ms. Scott?
Aye.
And Mr. Winters?
Aye.
And Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. So in that case, case forty-seven twenty, items two, three, oops, yeah, well, one through four actually, are recessed until the October ZBA meeting.
Thanks very much, we'll see you in October.
All right, now, on with the rest of the show here. The first case then is case thirty-four twenty, this is a case that was recessed, do I hear a motion to reopen the case? It was case thirty-four twenty and it was items two A and two C.
I'll make a motion to reopen the case.
That's Ms. Scott. Anyone second?
I second.
Mr. Wallner seconds. All in favor? Let's start with Mr. Wallner this time.
Aye.
And Mr. Winters?
Aye.
And Ms. Scott?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. So we're off the table. This particular case had to do with converting a two unit dwelling to a three unit dwelling, and they made several requests which we did grant before. We granted the minimum aisle width, we granted a variance for driveway widths, and we granted the setback requirements variance as well. This is at twenty-seventh Fayette Street. We did not act on the table of off-street parking to allow four standard nine by nineteen onsite parking spaces, nor did we act on the requirements for handicap spaces to provide no designated accessible handicap spaces except for one space is required. Mr. Chapman, are you with us? Can I see your name?
Yes, yes.
Just to tell the truth.
I do.
Would you like to fill us in on items A and C, please?
Sure. Concerning to A, I sent some information to Craig, I don't know whether you guys got it or not, I marked up a plot plan with the existing parking spaces and how the yard's laid out and, yeah, there it is.
Yeah, we did get that.
Okay, thanks Craig, by the way, and so there's five parking spaces that I have available. There's four spots that are side by side and then including the garage would make it a five, so I'm seeking a variance on the sixth spot. Yeah, yeah, just waiting for a response to that to see, I think.
Let's keep going on that, excuse me, go ahead, Andrew.
Well, telling maybe he could use a little prompting, can you just get, very briefly, because I remember this case and we, we approved the general concept, but we weren't sure about your use of the spots, can you just give us the real gist of what we, what we had wanted you to come back, like what we had suggested you work up for this meeting?
Yeah, we talked about whether or not, I think in the original drawing, the garage was listed as a shed, I believe, so they were kind of a gray area as to whether or not it was an actual garage. It does have a full-size garage door on it. It measures nine by nineteen, which is the requirement of a spot. So I just, I did go over there, I verified that, and then I marked up the plot plan so we could see exactly where it was located and how the yard was laid out, just to verify all that information.
Okay, oh, that's right, I remember now, so if I, so the issue was you need six spaces, you can't get six, you could get, well, we weren't sure if you could get five, and we were also wondering if you could get a handicap spot, right? Were those the two issues?
Right.
Okay, so.
How about the handicap spot? Why don't you address that?
Okay, so the handicap spot, if you look at the plot plan again, the four consecutive spots that are side by side, the fourth one furthest from the building has a lawn area that can be another spot, a half a spot, I'm not sure exactly how much we need to do the handicap spot, but there is, I believe there's fourteen feet to the fence from the edge of that last spot, that we could widen that spot.
Well, you would need to give us a plan that showed that, which you haven't done here, and I can imagine a situation if that eight by eight shed remains, that any extension of that spot would be blocked.
Yeah, I'd have to take out the shed to do that.
Is that your plan?
Yeah, that would be the plan, you got, I wasn't sure whether I needed to do that right away or whether that was something looking for an availability in the future, because we talked about future spot.
Mr. Chairman? Whatever would improve needs to be on a plan at least.
Mr. Chairman, if I might jump in for a second?
Sure.
Yeah, this, as it is a conversion resulting in three dwelling units, it will go planning board as a minor site plan review.
Okay.
So if the board, you know, requires that a accessible space be supplied during that review process, they would make sure that there is adequate space and design provided for that space.
All right, so what I'm hearing you say, Craig, is that we didn't get too worried about the actual specific design?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Well, it, I mean, it strikes me to Chairman Carley's point that, well, actually, sorry, I'm probably speaking a little out of line, I'm not, I'm kind of on the deliberations space, good. I'll hold that comment for.
Okay, very good. Mr. Chapman, is there anything else you'd like us to know?
Just one thing, yes, if I'm, if I'm moving the shed, can I move it to that other edge of the corner of the property? That would be the other thing, I don't want to lose the shed if I don't have to.
I think that probably would also be something you'd have to take up with the planning, with the board's site review.
Okay, yeah, I can redraw that with more specifics on that.
Andrew?
I just want to ask Mr. Chapman this question before he turns it over to us for deliberations. If we, I think the suggestion here is you can, you might not, I don't want to say want to do a handicap spot, you might not feel a handicap spot is really warranted right now, but if we deny that variance, it sounds like you could get a handicap spot in there one way or the other, but then you would probably only have, have a total of four spots, is that right?
No, I'd still have the five.
So you can have a five and a handicap spot, you might lose the shed or you might figure out a way to save it somewhere on the property.
Yeah.
That would be up to you. Okay.
I would just re-line those four spots, I'd move the line over and make the one closest to the building the actual handicap spot. I mean, if that, if that worked out even better, I could just change the lineage on the driveway.
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like us to know, Mr. Chapman?
Uh, no, I think that pretty well says it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in opposition to it? Any comments from code enforcement?
No, I don't have anything additional to add.
All right, in that case, we'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing. We have a truncated version of an earlier case that we have already made some decisions on, which in this part of it, they are asking for forgiveness for the number of parking spaces and for, I gather, not for a handicap space at this point, they're suggesting that they can do the handicap space. Does that sound correct to you, Craig?
Yes, well, I mean, that would be up to the board, if the board wished to still grant that variance, you certainly could, but if he didn't grant it, he would have to provide it.
Yeah, he didn't withdraw that variance request.
All right, well, then we can act on it. We can act on it or we can recess it until sometime in the next millennium. All right, with that, I'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing and invite the board to discuss the questions. Nick, what do you think?
Well, I think design review is going to handle the handicap issue, whether he puts it closer to the building or puts it at the far end at the expense of the shed, I think no, I'm going to put my, I'm going to leave that up to them. We did, as far as requiring relief from six space requirements, I'm prepared to grant that because I heard testimony that he was actually providing five, including the garage, although it's not stated here. So I'm inclined to support it.
Andrew?
Well, my question, I should know this, but the, the request says four, he said he can do five, can, can we amend the request or can we just grant it based on his representation that it's five and it'll be enforced for five?
You can grant it for five.
So we can specifically say five and that has the effect of amending his request?
Right, you're basically granting the four in place of six with the condition that he provides five.
Okay.
Ms. Scott?
I'm just full of questions tonight, so I have two questions, I know, it's late, it's Wednesday, um.
We're not going anywhere.
I know, I know, I could do this all night. I'm just curious about the math on the, on the figures that, that Mr. Chapman provided for the size of the spaces? What size are the spaces? Because it says the garage is an eleven by nineteen, but it says the four parking spaces are thirty-six by nineteen.
Abide.
Oh, see, look at that, you did the math. I'm like, God, I'm like, what is he talking about? Okay, so that's one answer, thank you. The other answer is, actually, this is a Craig question, and I should know this, and I'm sorry I don't. The requirements are for six parking spaces, is it supposed to be six parking spaces and a handicap or six parking spaces including a handicap?
It's required to have six parking spaces, one of which should be handicapped accessible.
All right, thank you. My thoughts on this are that the five spaces provided are fine, but one of them should be an accessible spot.
I'm inclined to agree with my fellow board members, so what I'm going to suggest is that we divide up A and C as separate, separate topics, and I'm going to first ask if there is anyone who would care to make a motion on A, which is allow the provision of five standard parking spaces, four plus the conditional addition of one.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
I agree.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, sorry.
Looked too quick. Um, I can't vote in favor of that the way it was ranked, it said, it said five tradition, it said traditional parking spaces, which makes it sound like they don't have to be, one doesn't have to be a handicap accessible.
Well, we're going to deny that variance so that, then the, then the code will require that one of them be handicapped.
Okay, all right.
I don't think there'll be any ambiguity about it.
Okay, all right.
So he won't have a variance to avoid a handicap.
All right, I just didn't, I just wanted to make sure with the wording, okay.
Yeah.
A traditional handicap space.
A traditional spot, okay.
Where were we? We had a motion and a second and I was about to call for a vote, I believe.
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Aye.
And Mr. Winters?
Aye.
And Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. And now, item C, which was the request for the handicap space, do I hear a motion to either grant or deny?
I'll make a motion to deny the variance as requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, I think we have talked it over, so I'll call for a vote. Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. Winters?
Aye.
Ms. Scott?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. That means that that variance is denied, and that concludes our business on that particular case, case thirty-four twenty.
Thank you, everyone.
Our next case is case forty-eight twenty, Mountain Lake Heating Fuel LLC. The applicant wishes to modify variances granted under case thirty-three twenty and request the following. A variance to Article twenty-eight seven seven F driveway widths to maintain a driveway with a minimum width of ten feet where a minimum width of eighteen feet is allowed with a CUP and twenty-four feet is standard, or in the alternative, the applicant requests a variance to Article twenty-eight seven seven F driveway widths to allow a driveway with a maximum width of seventeen feet plus or minus where a minimum width of eighteen feet is allowed with a CUP and twenty-four feet is standard. A modification to the lot coverage variance allowing sixty-five percent lot coverage as granted under case thirty-three twenty to now allow seventy-three percent lot coverage where sixty percent is the maximum allowed. That, as I understand it, Craig, would be not necessary if we granted number one.
That's correct.
Okay. Who's here for Matt Blake?
It is I, George Newton.
Ah, very good. Mr. Newton, would you promise to tell us the truth?
I've promised to tell the truth.
Very good. Fill us in, please, on whatever you would like us to know.
I talked to John, who has the house at thirty, which is to the left of twenty-eight, which is the house I have, and his house is like two and a half feet from the boundary on the left-hand side, and he would prefer to see the ten-foot driveway because of the distance and snow plowing. And that also wouldn't change the previous variance for the sixty-five foot lot coverage that was granted under case thirty-three dash twenty.
What is it that we granted before, Craig?
Um, let's see, it was.
I've got it right here if you want.
Oh, go ahead, Nick, please.
Thirty-three twenty was a request to, oh wait, I've got the wrong one, hold on. To convert an existing two-unit residence to four dwellings and provide required parking onsite, request a variance to allow a total lot coverage of sixty-five percent where the allowed maximum lot coverage is sixty percent for property located at twenty-eighth South State Street.
But there was nothing concerning the driveway?
There was not, that was sort of, could be my question to Craig as why that didn't come up.
Very simply, it was an oversight.
Okay.
When, when I wrote it up, I was under the assumption that they had at least eighteen feet to provide, or they could provide eighteen feet for a driveway, which is the minimum width that's allowed by a conditional use permit. I think in reality, they ended up with like seventeen feet, six inches, so they weren't eligible for the CUP. That didn't come to our attention till after the last hearing, so.
Okay, thank you. Very good. Mr. Newton, is there anything else you'd like? Mr. Newton, is there anything else you'd like us to know?
No, that's it.
All right, then I will ask, is there anyone in the audience who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition? Any further comment from code enforcement?
No, I have nothing further to add.
All right, with that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We heard testimony that the requirement for expanding the width of the driveway, which would trigger other requests for variance which are included in this appeal, is not needed and that the owner preferred not to do it, and that his neighbor would prefer that he not do it. So let's deal with number one first, under 4820, and then deal with or if we need to, because that's the contingent request. What do you think, Ms. Scott?
I still, it must be, today's just my night, I got questions. So in the application, it says the driveway is 12 feet, but in the hearing notice, it's 10 feet. Is the driveway 12 feet or 10 feet?
It pretty much depends on where you measure it. If you measure it right at the beginning, it's 10, and it swells out to probably 15 near the back of the building. I just wanted to give you the least amount, so I don't sound like I'm exaggerating the driveway.
Okay, thank you. That was one confusion. And so basically, you want us to say the driveway is fine the way it is, or we, it's the or. The first variance that we're being asked for is keep the driveway the way it is and not change it all, correct?
That's what we preferred.
All right.
So your alternative, if we deny that, is you could widen it up to 17 feet, but then you're going to, that's going to increase your lot coverage?
Yes.
So you would still need a one-foot variance for the width and then more lot coverage?
Not at 17 feet. At 18 feet, which is required, it goes into the setback about three to five inches.
So you can only do seven. You need a variance for the width regardless?
Yes.
Okay, back to Ms. Scott. What are your thoughts on this?
I would say I'd rather keep the driveway as is than still have to give a variance and increase the lot coverage on this lot. So that's where my thinking is.
Mr. Witters?
If I can recall, we granted this, I wish we had known about it at the time. I don't, you know, just the way you could have had the whole package, but I mean, it obviously was just an honest oversight. I don't think it would have changed my viewpoint on the total concept. So the issue is they can only get one car by instead of two, but it's not... How many units are you putting in again? You went from one.
Four units.
And what, how many are there now?
Two units now. There's two four-bedroom, three and four-bedroom, and it'll be three two-bedrooms and one single bedroom.
Okay, so you're not increasing the total size, you're just changing the layout to get more apartments with fewer bedrooms each?
I'm actually eliminating two bedrooms on the third floor that I will not use.
Okay. And it seems like it's, there's been no comment that it hasn't worked, so there probably won't be necessarily more cars, because the building's not going to have more people necessarily, so I'd be inclined to approve it.
Mr. Warner?
Yeah, I'm inclined to approve it, too. I don't think widening the driveway is going to really improve anything over there. And it really isn't necessary for the kind of traffic that's going to be in the parking lot.
I agree with my fellow board members. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'd move to approve alternate one, so the first variance that, for a minimum width of 10 feet.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Further discussion?
Should we be saying that it's the existing driveway as opposed to a minimum of 10 feet? Because he did state that the driveway in the back goes to 15 feet.
Well, we can say it. I don't think it matters. He testified that that was what he planned to do.
Right.
I would amend, since I mean...
If I could just jump in, I'd be hesitant to put that type of restriction on there, because this also will be going through minor site plan review. For any reason, the planning board wanted to realign the driveway or change it, I don't think that restriction would help the situation.
Okay, all right.
All right, so the motion stands, and it's been seconded. Any other discussion? We'll call for a vote then. Ms. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Witters?
Aye.
Mr. Warner?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. So that variance is granted. That takes us to our next case this evening, which is case 40-20, Melissa Shaput and Wendy Sullivan. The applicant requests a special exception as allowed under Article 2840H Table of Principal Uses and in accordance with supplemental standards, Article 28529, commercial kennels and veterinary hospitals to allow a doggy daycare, principal use M8 at 180 Clinton Street in an R.O. residential open space district. Ms. Shaput and Ms. Sullivan, I gather you are with us.
Yes, we are. Thank you for hearing us tonight. We appreciate it.
Do you both swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do. Yes, we do.
Very good. Why don't you fill us in on what you would like us to know?
So 180 Clinton Street is a 7.8-acre site surrounded by conservation wetlands, conservation land owned by the state. We are not proposing to modify the existing structure or to clear any additional land. That big, beautiful, un-mowed field will remain as it exists today. We would like to use, we would like to use the first floor of this three-story building as a doggy daycare. We live on the second and third floors of the building and would be onsite at all times. Our backyard, which is the green area you see directly behind the house, is already fenced in for our own dogs, and we are not proposing to expand that area at all, just leave it exactly the same. And there, we estimate that we'll have between five and 10 dogs on any given day, that would be the max, and plan to compost the pet waste so that there's no impact. We are not planning on any overnight outdoor stays. If we do have any boarding, it's, we're only going to use the three bedrooms that exist in the first floor of the unit, and those are going to be luxury boarding units, and the dogs will be inside overnight. They won't be outside. We don't believe this poses any noise risk to our surrounding neighbors, because we are so far set back from everybody. We're not proposing any structural changes, so we don't believe that it poses any impact to, you know, the wetlands or any of the surrounding area. And our asphalt, which I believe we're going to be subject to a minor site plan review, but based on our calculations, we believe that we meet the six parking space requirement, because in front of our garage, we're estimating that we have about 913 square feet, which is far more than the two spaces that are required. And the asphalt area that you see where the three cars are parked, we estimate that that's 879 square feet. All of that will be resolved in site plan review, but the dogs will all be picked up and dropped off. Nobody will be onsite for any more than, you know, maybe five minutes on any given day. And I think that's the gist of it. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Questions from the board?
I have some questions, just because, again, because it's today. But also, I had a dog for many years that I used doggy daycare, so I was interested in that you're only going to be open Monday through Friday, but you're going to offer boarding? So does that mean you're not going to board over the weekends, which is usually the busiest time for dog boarding?
So the actual doggy daycare business, we're proposing to be open from 6:00 in the morning until maybe 6:00 at night during the week. If we do have boarders, then yes, we are proposing to be able to board over the weekend, only in those three rooms that we have in the unit.
All right, I was just curious. And I was curious, so you're only doing puppies and senior dogs?
Yes, that is because the fence that we installed for our own dogs is only a four-foot tall fence, and we understand that with larger dogs, you need larger fences. And the reality is, the vast majority of people that need doggy daycare are puppies and seniors, dogs that need oversight all the time versus, you know, the adolescent dogs that need less daycare. So we felt that was a niche that we could meet and that our yard was very adequately set up for as-is.
Okay. Well, you'll do fine as a business. There's tons of dog parents out there that are always looking for daycare, so.
Absolutely. We're one of them. We have a Samoyed, so.
Any other questions from the board? Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
I believe that covers it.
Very good, thank you very much. Is there anyone who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition to it? Is there any comment from code enforcement?
Yes, back in 2007, there was a special exception granted to permit a commercial kennel at this location to accommodate up to 80 dogs at that point in time. That was also going to have canine daycare. It was approved by the board. It never went further. That would have required major site plan review. The applicant did not pursue it any further than the variances or the special exception that was granted.
I remember that case. All right, with that, we'll call the public testimony portion of this hearing complete, and I'll invite the board to discuss the case. We have a request for a special exception for a doggy daycare. We heard testimony that all of the criteria for a special exception will be met. Is there... What do you think about that, Mr. Warner?
Um, I'm fine with it. I think it meets all the criteria of the requisite findings A through I as specified the RSA, so I'm inclined to approve it.
Mr. Witters?
Yeah, I mean, the special exception standard is, of course, more, generally more permissive, and I think that she addressed all of the factors, and it's not going to present a burden to any of the utilities or the neighbors. Seems like a good location for this type of thing.
Ms. Scott?
I would agree. The location is perfect for a doggy daycare with the size of the property and the lack of really neighbors, and for the small number of dogs and limited hours that they're going to be operating, I think it'll be, I think it'll be fine. Meets the criteria.
And I agree with all of you. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved to second. Is there any discussion on the motion? I will call then for a vote, starting with Mr. Warner.
Aye.
Mr. Witters?
Aye.
Ms. Scott?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Pardon me. And that, with that, the special exception is granted. And that moves us on to case 42-20. Rebecca Bacotti, the applicant wishes to replace and expand a fire-damaged 14-foot by 10-foot detached garage with a five-foot side setback and requests the following: A variance to the Table of Dimensional Regulations to permit a 16-foot wide by 14-foot long replacement structure with a three-foot setback from the easterly side, easterly side property line, where a 10-foot side setback is required, and a variance from Article 2840H Table of Dimensional Regulations to permit a 16-foot by 14-foot replacement structure with a three-foot setback plus or minus from the rear property line, where a 20-foot rear setback is required. All of this would take place at a property located at 7 Harrison Street in an RD residential downtown district. Ms. Bacotti?
I'm Rebecca Bacotti, and I will tell the truth.
I am certain that you will, and I'm grateful to you for sparing me, having to ask you. What would you like us to know?
Well, I wrote up a site plan for the expansion that I would like to offer.
We, okay, we have seen your application, so it's, we're aware of it, but by all means, put it up and we'll talk about it.
So the hatched-in area is the expansion of the garage that I propose. It's two feet closer to my neighbor to the left and two feet closer to the rear property line. The existing garage was 14 by 10. The proposed new garage is 16 by 14. It still has a significant amount of green space around it, so that I can maintain its edges all the way around, and I could walk around it and maintain its existence. And as you see included in the packet, I have signatures from all the property of Butters on all the sides, from 5 Harrison, where that red car is parked, as well as from 9, where the other side is. That porch on the property no longer exists. The garage in the back is what burnt. So if you look at the photographs that I included with the application, you'll see that the existing concrete pad that still remains is the 10 by 14 structure. That's the one with the two motorcycles in it. And the expansion is shown by the poles that are on the outside of that with the orange lines. That's where the new structure would go to. And then the pink tape on the far outside is where the property lines are. As you can see from the back property line, as well as from the eastern side, there is still a significant amount of space. And I have gotten permission from both the other boundary people that my proposal is okay with them as far as how close its setbacks to their property. And then for a comparison shot, I also used the comparison photo, which is the two photos of the property at 9. That's what you see on your screen there. And you can see how her garage is less than a foot, maybe two feet at the most, from my property line on the opposite side of my property, showing that I propose to have more space than that between my garage and my neighbors as shown in the drawing. My proposal is to modernize the space and take out the existing concrete pad, pouring a brand-new monolithic slab underneath the new 14 by 16 shed, which is a Reed's Ferry Shed already preassembled, which will be put on the new pad at the end of November if the ZBA grants my variance. Thank you very much, and if you have any other questions, let me know.
Are there questions from the board?
So, just trying to orient myself. You, the garage that burned down, was that, did that, was that within the setback on both of the setbacks you're talking about, or just one of them?
The garage that burnt down was within five feet of the eastern side, as well as five feet from the rear. However, it did have a small lean-to-type shed attachment to the rear, which brought it to one feet from the property line in the rear.
So to the side, you were, the side you had, you were not into the setback, but the rear, you're even farther into it if you include the lean-to?
Correct, and this uniformly creates more of a three-foot setback from both of those two property lines instead of the five-foot.
And I'm sorry to hear about the fire, by the way.
Thank you.
What's the, what's the motive for needing a bigger, a bigger garage?
Well, as long as the fire took away the garage that existed and that garage was going to be gone, the motive is that the two motorcycles you see in the picture, as well... the motive is that the two motorcycles you see in the picture, as well as the small car I own, went into storage every year at a facility down in Allentown called Vault Motor Storage. And the motivation is that if I slightly increase the garage size, I can now keep the two motorcycles at home in my own garage and cut my storage costs in half.
The questions from the board? Is there anything else you'd like us to know, Ms. Bakati?
No, not at this time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? I do have here the petition that Ms. Bakati referred to, and it is, um, in support of the appeal. It is signed by Kate Cross Powers and Mark McCarthy at nine Harrison Street, Susan Bolduc and Chris Gardner at five Harrison Street, Priscilla Giles and Debbie Link, or care of Debbie Lincoln at one-ten South State Street. We also have a letter in the form of an email from Michael Summerlin, thirteen Badger Street, who writes, uh, in favor of the appeal.
I'm very lucky. I have very supportive neighbors. They've all been very, um, involved in the process of me replacing this garage.
Wait, can you wait? Sorry, can I just ask another question? The, so the, ju- just to make, you said the current garage is five feet from five Harrison?
The current garage?
Or, I'm sorry, I apologize. The one that burned down?
The one that burned down. If you look at the picture where the concrete pad exists?
Yeah.
You can see the existing concrete pad was ten-by-fourteen, and that is the dimensions of the previous garage.
So, I'm looking at, does the, I'm looking at the GIS map. It looks really close if I'm looking at it right.
Well, the GIS is only approximate. Uh, that's, y- you can't rely on that for any accuracy.
I'll click out of that browser.
It, it's good for reference purposes.
I left my surveying software at the house.
Yeah. All right. Uh, is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition to the appeal? Any comments from code enforcement?
No, I do, don't have anything additional to add.
Very good. We heard testimony that the, I will declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We heard testimony that the existing garage burned down and the, uh, appellant would like to build a new garage that's slightly larger in place of it in order to be able to store her vehicles. Discussion. Let's start with Ms. Scott.
I guess I have a hard time with this. I, I understand wanting to have a bigger garage. I understand wanting to not have to pay for storage for motorcycles during the winter. But those are not great reasons to grant a variance. The property, the garage was already, um, in the setback by five feet. Now, it's going to be in the setback by seven feet to the side. It is better in the back. It's less of, uh, an impingement, I guess, because there was a lean-to. But I guess I, I'd like to hear what my fellow board members have to say, but I, I'm not sure I heard good justification for granting a variance.
Mr. Warner, what are your thoughts?
Well, we're only increasing the width by two feet. Um, that's a slight increase and as well as Ms. Scott noted that we've actually improved the situation in, in the back, so I think, um, really, one setback's been increased, one's been decreased, so I think to me that's a wash. Um, I think obviously adding a garage versus a, a tarped unit is, uh, in the best interest of the character of the neighborhood. I think subje- substantial justice would be done if we granted this.
Peter?
You know, I, I was, I was inclined to Laura's way of thinking, but I'm looking at the map here, and I have to say, her lot, other than nine and five, which are the three lots, are very similar size all in a row. There, her lot is much smaller than most of the other lots. It's, it's much, much smaller than one-ten and one-oh-eight South State Street.
If I can put that up again for us.
It's smaller than almost every other lot in that block, in the Harrison, Badger, Allison block, uh, State Street block, except for five and nine. So, the hurt, the three, three lots that she's got there, her, she's in the middle with the ones around her are really packed in and that makes me think that, that for her to have a garage in, in, in line with what most of her neighbors are going to have, she'd have a hard time fitting it in, uh, but for the setback really on at least two sides. So, I'm, I'm kind of putting aside the fire and kind of trying to conceive of this and how she, how, if she was building a garage new, which she basically is, and I think that's a pretty reasonable place for it and a pretty reasonable-sized garage. So, I'm, I, I kind of, a- as I was thinking about it, and I'm, I'm inclined to, to, to approve it.
Uh, my take on this is that, uh, the, although it's not unique, the, the lot definitely has characteristics that create difficulties for the people that occupy it, just as Andrew said. And this is a pretty classic case of the ordinance being applied to a neighborhood that was built long before there was an ordinance. And the two don't go together very well. We have found on several occasions that a garage, uh, at least a, a modest garage is a, a reasonable use, and this is about as modest a garage as you could build and still fit a car in it. So, I'm inclined to agree with, uh, Andrew and Nick that, uh, that the appeal is, is justified. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
And actually, I should be clear, there's two variances. Unless someone wishes to break them up, I'd move to approve both, both variances.
All right. The motion includes both variances. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? All right. We'll start with Mr. Warner.
Aye.
Mr. Watters?
Aye.
Ms. Scott?
Nay.
And I vote aye. Variances are granted, and we can move on to the next case.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. The next case is case forty-four twenty, Andrew Brauch. The applicant wishes to construct a twenty-four-foot square garage and an eleven-foot square plus or minus connecting mudroom addition to an existing dwelling and requests a variance from Article twenty-eight four-one H Table of Dimensional Regulations to allow a setback for the garage of ten feet from the northerly side property line where a setback of fifteen feet is required for property located at sixteen Thai Lane in an RM residential medium-density district. Mr. Brauch?
Hi, this is Andrew Brauch, and I will tell the truth.
Ah, very good, and I apologize for mispronouncing your name. Mr. Brauch, what would you like us to know?
So, um, a garage and mudroom of this similar size is a common accessory in our neighborhood. In fact, uh, neighbors to either side of me, uh, have similar constructions. Um, I know I did put in for eleven-foot wide. It's going to be closer to ten. Um, but, you know, I'll stick with the five-foot, uh, foot variance request just to be safe. Um, want to be kind to my neighbors. The, the, the other houses, uh, in the development, um, were placed in an area where they could, um, construct such a mudroom and garage of similar sizes. And, um, I have no other place in my yard, um, that would be suitable for, um, a project that's consistent with the neighborhood. I suppose, I, I didn't build the house. I bought it when I was two years old. Um, but if I was to build it, I would have built it, um, closer to the southern side, so I wouldn't need a variance. Um, but, um, I, I, I think you have my packet there. We have an EV car, and the only place to plug it in currently is, um, through, uh, uh, a plug-in in the backyard, actually, on the other side of the fence. And so, I, I currently have to park that about three feet from my neighbor, and I feel really bad about it. So, my hope is that by being able to park inside the garage, I can, you know, you, farther away from his house. There is a, a row of lilacs that is currently there. I don't see it in that picture. It's an older picture. Um, so there would be some green space there. Um, and, you know, we have two kids and their bikes and toys and all sorts of stuff that are often out there. Wind blowing it out into the street, and so I'm hoping to be able to house those inside the garage for safety and for, uh, cleanly appearance for the neighborhood. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
So, the imposition is five feet?
That's correct.
Did you consider doing a six-foot wide by some other dimension deep mudroom in order to comply?
Um, I did consider it. Um, I have a very large family. I've won, I'm one of, uh, nine kids. We have lots of cousins and stuff, and for family gatherings, I want to make sure that it's safe. And six-foot wide just simply, uh, wouldn't be large enough. And, um, like I said, both neighbors on the other side, um, have a much larger mudroom than eleven by eleven. And, um, so I'm hoping that you would consider that.
Craig, can we have the site map, please? For the, for the neighborhood? I just want to see the rest of the neighborhood if I can.
There are, there are, most of the lots are, are similar. There are some, uh, larger lots to the, uh, to the same. Actually, my neighbor, um, that is adjacent to me where the garage would be close to, has a larger lot, so he's able to fit a little bit more in there. He's got a, basically the same thing that I was looking to build.
Other questions from the board?
So, I just wanted to make sure I, I understood this. You're, you're asking for, sorry, I have so many pieces of paper. A five-foot, there, the variance is for five feet, and you don't want to make the mudroom five feet shorter because you don't think it would be safe? I, did I hear that right?
No, I just, it's not really big enough for our needs and it's consistent, consistent with the neighborhood. Um, that would be an extremely small mudroom, so, um, the hardship is I'm not able to build something consistent with the neighborhood because of, um, where my house was placed on the lot when I purchased it.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
Yeah, just to, on that last thought, um, because I'm looking at the drawing here in a little more detail, um, where could the house have been that would have, because the house, where would that, where would the better place to have been that, build house like farther?
Uh, so, if, I mean, I, if it was, if it was planted farther to the south, um, it's built about twenty-one feet, uh, from the, from the neighbor's property line on the southern side, where the fifteen-foot, if it was built closer to the fifteen-foot setback, that would give me another six feet, and I wouldn't have needed the variance if it was built where it should have been built, like other houses in the neighborhood. That, the, the house to my southern side appears that they're built, um, right at the fifteen-foot mark, so they were able to build the same garage, uh, about a month ago with this, actually a larger mudroom that I'm requesting.
Wait, Craig, can you, where, can you put the arrow where the south is? Okay. Oh, you're saying, but then you'd be in the setback there, right?
No, I'd still, if I, if I
The dotted line is where you could get up to. I see what you're getting at.
That's, that's correct. Yes.
I see. If you, see, if you want to use the compl- yeah, I see. I get it.
You can see the house to the, on the southern side, that same side, you can see the fence panels. Those are eight, six feet. They're right at the fifteen-foot mark, whereas whoever built my house, uh, over, you know, they didn't take that into consideration.
Did you, not that really, man, I mean, did you buy it? Did you, did you have it built or you bought it from, did you buy it from the builder or from someone else?
Um, I bought it from someone else.
Is these, these went, how old, i- is it like ten years old now, these?
Uh, they, I believe it went up in two thousand and seven. I purchased it in two thousand and nine.
That's correct. Two thousand and seven.
Other questions from the board? Mr. Bausch, or Brauch, is there anything else you'd like us to know?
Uh, I just appreciate your time.
Thank you.
You are welcome. Is there anyone here who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone here who would like to be heard in opposition to it? And is there any comment from code enforcement?
Uh, I don't have anything additional to add. Uh, just want to note, there is a letter here from thirteen Thai Lane. Did you receive that one?
I believe we did.
An email, I should say.
Yes, from Mitchell Cormier, or Michelle Cormier, excuse me.
Yeah, Michelle and, uh, Ben Linguli.
Oh, yes. Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay, just so long as you got to read that into the record. I don't have anything additional to add myself.
All right. I appreciate your bringing me up short on that one. The, uh, Michelle and Ben Linguli did, in fact, write in, they say that they have no objections, and they live at thirteen Thai Lane.
Is that the property to the left of this one? Greg? Oh, it's across the street?
So, the property that he's going in, d- do we know what eighteen says?
Okay. I just, I just didn't know if the one who sent the letter in was the neighbor that was the most impacted. So, the one who sent the letter is across the street. Okay, thank you.
All right. Very good. I guess with that, we close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Did I miss anything? No, I don't think so. We heard testimony that the appellant would like to add a twenty-four-foot square garage and an eleven-square foot, or eleven-foot square mudroom. He requires, uh, a side yard setback variance to do that. He indicated that he didn't believe that the mudroom that he could fit between the garage and the house would be adequate for him if he were to comply with the side yard setback. Ms. Scott, what are your thoughts?
I know it's only five feet, uh, but that only leaves a ten-foot setback from the neighbor. There is the, the nice plantings. But they could meet the setbacks by changing the mudroom. So, I have a hard time seeing what the hardship is here. It's more of a desire to have an eleven-by- eleven mudroom as opposed to meeting the zoning requirements.
Mr. Watters?
Yeah, here, you know, in contrast to the last case, I, I think the distinction is, you know, the lots are almost, you know, they're extremely s- similar. I mean, some of the ones on the cross are slightly, but, yeah, obviously compared to the, the last neighborhood, they're, they're very similar lot sizes, so there's nothing particularly unique, and I, I don't, I don't think what he wants to do is, you know, unreasonable per se, but you know, the, unlike the last neighborhood, as, as, um, Mr. Carter pointed out, that where that it was built way before the zone, and there's so many competing discrepancies in the, the, the structures and the, and the neighborhoods. I mean, this one was obviously set out. He may have a point. If someone in the builder had thought about it a little bit more, they could have given him the full. But I think the point is, it's not, that, that the thought wasn't, you would literally use every single inch up to the setback on each side per se, so I with, you know, I, 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 I see what he wants to do and I, and I, I wish I could agree, but I, I have to say, I can't see anything unique about the lot that, that would give him a hardship here. So, I, I have to agree with Laura.
Mr. Warner?
We heard testimony from him, uh, that, uh, most, many of the neighbors enjoyed a, a larger mudroom, and to me, that sounds like reasonable use as being enjoyed by his neighbor, and he's trying to get the same kind of reasonable use out of his, his property. So, I think I tend to lean a little bit the other way based on that.
Very good. Uh, I'm inclined to agree that I think, although it might not be optimum, it's, it's a plausible it it's, it's a plausible arrangement to keep the garage at twenty-four square, which is a decent sized garage, but not lavish. Uh, and a mudroom that's a little bit smaller, and stay within the setbacks. So I'm I'm inclined, in this particular case, uh not to grant, I don't think that uh hardship based on the lot was was actually demonstrated. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny the variance uh due to the lack of um hardship based on the um property or unique characteristics of the property as presented.
And Andrew? Or, excuse me, does anyone care to make a second? I got ahead of myself.
Process of elimination, I'm the one.
Uh, did you second?
I seconded.
Okay, so it's been moved to seconded, discussion. All right, we'll call for the vote. Uh, all those in favor, starting with Mr. Wallner?
Nay.
Mr. Winters?
Aye.
Ms. Scott?
Aye.
And I vote aye, the variance is denied. That takes us to let's see, I believe the last case on our agenda remaining for this evening, which is case forty-nine twenty. Pamela Sullivan for Richmond Sullivan LLC, the applicant wishes to convert an existing office suite condominium into a residential dwelling condominium, and requests variances from Article twenty-eight four five E Development Standards in Performance Districts and twenty-eight five forty-eight Central Business Performance District Standards to allow the lower level and the first level to be used for residential purposes, where residential uses are to be located on or above, the second level and the first level is to be used for allowed non-residential purposes. All this for property located at six B Hills Avenue in the CBP Central Business Performance District. Ms. Sullivan?
I'm Terry Trier, and I'm speaking on behalf of her, and I promise to tell the truth. I am her project manager.
Would you fill us in on why you feel this uh variance is appropriate?
So uh I also live in the building, and we converted our unit last year. Um, our unit fit within the guidelines because our unit is a lower level unit. Uh, all of our living space is on the lower below ground. Um, Ms. uh, Ms. Sullivan tried to sell her unit as an office space for, from November until just recently she took it off the market. Um, she had various buyers come to look at it, but it's not um ADA compliant. It's um, it's, it's a very uh um unique unit, it while it has its top floor is it has a top floor with like two, I guess what you would call offices, but then it has two, another level and a half that go down. She has two entrances, um one which comes off of basically a patio area. Um, the unit is not on the street, it's way set back into the back of the building into an area where basically most of the residential units would be used. Um, or the residential space would be used, um it's as you can see right here on the screen, those are the steps that go up to begin with. And then her, if you can see that table, her unit is way back there into a area which we actually have marked as private, because uh the doctor and the hair, now new hairstylist on the other side um that use those the backs area is private, so it's not to be used as like a waiting room, it's really, her unit um is back where she is basically surrounded by other, you know, above her and everything are all residential units, so it's a, it's a mixed use building. Um, like I say, she tried selling it, it would, you know, she she couldn't sell it, the, it's not the people that were looking at like doctors and stuff are like, it's not ADA compliant, and um, she really, the hardship is, she doesn't know what to do it, like she's gonna keep it for herself now, if she can convert it, she can get this variance. Uh, it will help her greatly because um for eleven months she tried to sell it and it just didn't sell, and she's basically without any other choice but to default. Um, I know that financial hardship isn't a reason, but she's really trying to keep with the building and really keep it um as like it is, it's mixed use, the in, the entire um Hills Court Board Association stands behind her. I'm a member of that board as well, um eh, you know, it's just basically in a nutshell, that is, you know, what what we're working with.
Right, which are the board?
Pictures too, that Craig may have.
What was the last commercial use that it had?
She owned it, she owned it, she just had an office in there, but she's moved her offices up north. So she has no use for it, so she tried to sell it, now she's just gonna keep it. Uh, if it can be made into residential, she plans to keep it and um either rent it out as an apartment or keep it for her own purposes, and she will be doing if keeping it for her own purposes, she will still continue to use one of those rooms as an office.
What kind of?
Go ahead.
What kind of work does she?
Uh, she's a graphic designer, so it's not a.
A lot of clients.
There's no, there was really never any clients, they just, they just worked there, it was, it was a workspace, it wasn't really a retail or a space that you got any foot traffic from.
So the, the quote first floor, you still have to go up to a flight of stairs even to get.
Absolutely, even to get into there, yes.
Very steep hill.
Yes, yes, it is.
Other questions? Is there anything else you'd like us to know, Ms. Trier?
Um, I just, you know, I really stand behind her, everyone here stands behind her, she's made this difficult decision, and she's trying to move forward and doing what's best for the building and the tenants and everyone involved, and everybody stands behind her.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who would like to be heard in opposition to it? Is there any comment from code enforcement?
Nope, I don't, don't have anything to add.
That will close the public testimony portion of the hearing. We do, we heard testimony that the unit is in a place where it is really not useful as a commercial office unit uh both because of exposure and because of access, lack of both. And we have therefore a request to convert it to a living unit. Start with Ms. Scott, what are your thoughts?
Um, though I um support the ordinance and not wanting to have residential living space on the first floor, it wasn't, this ordinance wasn't written for this type of unit, I mean, this is not on the street front, it doesn't have public access. Um, you can't use it really for retail or office space, cause it's not ADA compliant. So it really is a unique piece of property um in light of the ordinance, and uh I'm inclined to support it.
Andrew?
Yeah, if you, from my memory, if you compare this street to Pleasant Street, would you be the next one of the next parallel streets, Pleasant Street, although it's on an incline, all of the, all of the storefronts are level. Whereas this one, I don't, doesn't get much traffic, I would rarely go up there, but if, as I recall, you kinda there's nothing really level, there's not much like, it's not very well set out for retail activity at all. Um, so I have to agree, the way this, the street is laid out, i- it is a unique compared to the other downtown streets nearby, that it 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 it's technically on the first floor, but it it's really almost like like a, like a half level up, so I I I agree with Laura.
Mr. Wallner?
And so do I, and I don't think you can park on that street anyway, can you?
There, no, we rent parking spaces.
Yeah, so I I'm inclined to agree that uh.
Very good, I agree with my fellow board members, if ever a property was unique in its configuration, and that that configuration caused a problem, this one is it. Uh, is there anyone who care to make a motion?
I move to approve the uh, I guess it's a use variance.
Uh, it's a single use variance, I believe. No, wait a minute, there's a variance from Article Development Standards Performance Districts, and uh.
It's, there is two sections of the ordinance that essentially say the same thing.
Ah, so we're gonna hit him with one bat?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so there's a single variance. Did we get a motion?
Yeah, I moved to.
You made the motion.
You did make a motion?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, and did anyone second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, uh apparently I missed that part of the meeting. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, yeah, Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. Winters?
Aye.
Ms. Scott?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. And that concludes uh the, the variance is granted, and that concludes the agenda, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from last month? I didn't see them.
Well, the problem is the minutes are just um uh shows the rea- the the voting, uh it doesn't show the details yet.
All right, well then I guess we'll have to uh defer those till next month. Is there any other business that we need to take care of tonight, Craig?
No, I believe that's all, and just a, you know, reminder, for those who wish to uh participate, we will be resuming next week, uh September ninth at seven PM.
Thank you very much, thanks, everybody.
Alright, good night.
Bye, guys.
Thank you all.